Stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you and welcome, everybody, tonight to our council meeting. Just one word, if you get up to speak in a microphone, or if you're using a microphone, once again, please speak close to the microphone, so those at home can hear. That will be much better, as we're doing some tests on the microphones. And with that roll call, please.
Counselor Tate?
Here.
Demas?
Here.
Zadi?
Here.
Shalata?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
West?
Here.
Alter?
Here.
Windorf?
Here.
Mayor Como? Here. Counselors, first order of business, I'd entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda you have before you're here tonight.
So move, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. And counselors, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the city council meeting, February 5th, 2019.
So move, Your Honor.
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. This is going to bring us right into the 2019 Palisades Park Court renovation bids. Looks like we have two bidders. Contractor number one, Tennis &amp; Track, out of Salt Lake City. Total bid for the project, $99,680.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Windorf?
What was the company that put in that bid?
That is Tennis &amp; Track.
Tennis &amp; Track. Thank you.
Out of Salt Lake City.
And do you know if we got any information about if this included the pickleball?
Um, one issue we have with the pickleball court is we heard the dimensions were wrong. So before the bids are approved, I'm staff, make sure that that's correct. I didn't hear back from that individual, but it does involve.
Thank you.
Bid bond is attached. Total bid, $123,145.89.
Your Honor?
Councilman Zadi?
I had, um, talking about the dimensions, but I did talk to a couple of people, actually. No, got the bid now, but they weren't really made aware. The one thing they're looking at is the plans that we had showed four pickleball courts would all be temporary with the size of the pickleball court. And what they're looking at and asking, is there any way that we've got a number of basketball courts? Um, is there any way to make two courts permanent? They'd put together a couple of options that would size them to 100 foot by 100. Would shrink the basketball courts, they'd still be there for people, but it would accommodate two permanent pickleball courts. I wanted to scan these out to go for review, and if that's something they can...
I'd be interested in seeing that and comparing to what originally was bid, to see if the price or the, um, the, um, bid needs to be changed. Thank you, Counselor Zadi. Looks like the dimensions on both of them are the same length and width-wise, just the layout.
Yeah, the footprint's the same, it's just the layout and the marketing.
Okay. I, um, I would suggest we refer this to the rec department, to let them review that, give them their recommendation. But I would agree, it seems like pickleball is becoming more and more popular. I have no problem. There's any discussion? We'll include that in the bid, if, Kristen, if you would. Okay, next item on our agenda is the appointment section of our agenda. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit to you the name of Gene Legursky to serve first term on the Joint Powers Water Board.
Counsel, Gene Legursky has stepped up to serve on the Joint Powers Water Board. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Shalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I would like to also give a, a big thank you to Don Hartley, who's served us well on the Joint Powers Water Board, and is trying to retire. We keep pulling him back, but we appreciate all the work that he's done at this time. This is going to bring us into the Presentations and Proclamations section of our agenda. We have five presentations. Item number three, the Greater Little Mountain Coalition, has rescheduled, so we'll see them at maybe our next meeting. But I'm, I'm thinking with the amount of people that probably want to speak on this, we're going to get through the presentations, and then, um, in the petition sections that follows it, after public hearings, we'll get up and we'll hear from everybody that has a concern. Make sure you speak into the microphone, so we can get your name and part of the record, if you would. So with that, Rocket City Street Racing. Tim Robinson, Alan Zanetti. And I believe there's a microphone up there. Or you're used to. Okay.
I'll try not to break into song. Mr. Mayor, council, department heads. My name is Tim Robinson, I'm a sergeant with Rock Springs PD. To kind of give you a rundown of what we're going to be talking to you about tonight. Last summer, Mr. Zanetti approached me, and had this idea about possibly opening up some city streets to drag racing. Over the last almost year, we've, me being a police officer, I've driven a lot of streets, uh, all times of the night, all times of the day, to kind of get an idea of some of the best locations. Um, we're going to be presenting, in our proposal, the idea of Stagecoach. I'll use the little hand, because we don't have a pointer. Right here, where the little hand is moving, is Stagecoach. Over this way, to the east, is Foothill Boulevard. Here is Summit Drive. So, the idea was to try to find a location that was relatively safe, relatively outside of residential areas. Um, we plan to race, maybe three times during the summer, at least initially. Proposal is, one day in June, one day in July, one day next. Just depending on how the popularity goes, how, how well it's received, and obviously the residences, or the residential area, is going to be a bit of a concern. We've had a few people express those concerns, and hopefully we can address those tonight. So anyway, moving back a little bit, about a year ago, we put together a petition, or an interest, that we kept at Mr. Zanetti's shop. Just basically, hey, is this something that you'd be interested in participating in, something you'd be interested in watching, or something that you think would be of benefit? So far, we've got close to 1,200 signatures on that petition. Around the same time, we put a post on a couple of the Facebook pages in Rock Springs. Man Cave, uh, Sweetwater Feedback, to kind of get some impression from the community, what they thought would happen. We had overwhelming support for the idea. A lot of people thought it was great, whether they'd be participating, or just spectating. We did have some people who had some concerns, primarily about safety, and about noise. And hopefully, we can address some of those concerns tonight. There are a lot of logistics to work out on this. Um, insurance is probably one of the biggest things that we need to work on, and Mr. Zanetti is working on that. But until we actually have an idea that what we can do, uh, the insurance companies won't really say, yes, we can insure you, and this is how much it's going to be. The impact on the city, as far as financially, I think is going to be relatively small. What we're going to be looking for is this to be part of a police department PR endeavor. We want the police department to be involved. We, this section of roadway, along with a couple of other roadways in town, are commonly known for illegal drag racing. Usually happens late at night, um, some loud cars, fast cars, alcohol may or may not be involved. Um, but we want to try to curb that. We want to give people an ability to do it legally, and safely, and monitored, so we can have a little bit of control over some of the circumstances that are, that could happen. Racing is inherently dangerous, um, people crash, uh, it happens. We want to minimize the effect. So, to give you an idea of what we're looking for, we're looking at doing a one-eighth mile course. Uh, a couple reasons for that. Number one, eighth mile, speeds don't get nearly as high as they would in quarter mile. Right here, is the edge of the residential area. We would be starting approximately between 750 to 1,000 feet away from there, right around here. What this does for us is a couple things. It gives us some parking, for both spectators, and for participants in the school parking lots. The race would go one-eighth mile, roughly to about here, at which point, um, we have plenty of room to slow down, about an eighth of a mile. Additionally, if we have a car, let's say they have a brake failure, or there's some issue with the car, there is a dirt road at the end, they can continue on out into the desert, slow down. One of the concerns from, uh, the neighborhood was that, um, the school might be in danger, maybe there might be children playing on a playground. Right here is Pilot Butte Elementary, here's their playground. There's approximately one-quarter of a mile of desert between the roadway and the playground. With the start point being here, during the summer, there will be no spectators beyond or to the west of that location. Spectators are going to be held to a location roughly about here. Now, again, those are logistics that we're going to have to work out. As you can see, in any direction, there's plenty of desert, there's no residences, there are no, um, there are no walking paths, other than sidewalk and, um, or, no designated walking path. What this does for us is a couple things. With the police department being involved, we are able to block off the roadway, right here, at Sweetwater. Additionally, we'd be able to block off the roadway over here at Reagan. There's no other inlets, other than out from the, uh, from the desert, onto the roadway. We would not be blocking off any routes to get to residential areas, or any businesses, other than during the school year, other than going out into the desert, there's really no purpose for those roadways. Say no purpose, but they aren't, they aren't highly traveled, summertime. Now, we do understand that there are people who walk pathways with their animals, with their children. Another reason police department would be involved, we'd be monitoring pedestrian traffic. Additionally, volunteers from a number of groups have offered assistance in keeping pedestrians, uh, aware of what's going on, roadway. As far as insurance goes, again, we kind of discussed that a little bit. The fees would be paid by the actual participant, not looking at the city to pick up any additional insurance fees. Now, I know that there are insurances that the city would have to cover, um, but as far as for the racing, we would be... Any racers, anybody participating, has to be legal, um, or licensed driver, legal age, 18 or above. They've got to be in a vehicle that is street legal, it's got to be currently registered and insured, got to have brakes, transmission, seller, uh, basically, there has to be an inspection. Mufflers, got to be a stock muffler, or... Wyoming is a little bit liberal when it comes to regulations on vehicles, it's not like California. Uh, so somebody may have glass packs, but those are going to be legal, but there are no straight pipes. We're going to be running just pure gasoline, something that you can get from a pump. No nitrous, at this point, no diesel, initially. We do hope eventually, if this takes off, to be allowed, uh, diesel trucks to participate, and maybe motorcycles, and some other things. I've got a long list of things that we can go over, but that's essentially what we're proposing. Uh, we would hope that we get some permission from the city to give it a try, at least one time, to see where it would go. We're looking at mid-June for, um, demonstration, or at least the initial race. Um, I'm going to give it to Alan, he's going to talk a little bit about the logistics, as far as, uh, developing an LLC, getting insurance.
I'm Alan Zanetti. Kind of nervous. I don't stand here like this. The racers, if, if anybody's concerned, is concerned about who would be racing, what would be racing, we would race on a top-ten list. There would be 10 racers on the list to start with. Anybody who wanted to participate and break into that top-ten list, obviously, they would have to buy their way into the association, so that we collect funds to cover insurance, all those things. We'd be covering all the insurance. I mean, that's, I'm talking with an insurance man about that. Um, to get onto the top-ten list, we would take people, names probably, in the, in the way that they paid to get into the association, to be able to have a shot at that top-ten list. Um, they would bracket race into that, so if you had four people that wanted to come into it, two would race, two would race, the winner would race each other, and they would get a shot at that list. Each one of those people as well would have to, everybody would have to be an association member. So, I guess what I'm saying, it would be organized, it's, it's not a free-for-all. Something we'll have to organize, but there's a plan to organize this, and how it would be organized. Racers wouldn't, you would have new racers, as they tried to get onto it, or bracket raced, but the racers that raced on a regular basis would be those that were in, or can make the top-ten list. I think it's a way to take and make this organized, so people, that was a big thing. You know, some of us, I can't go race, I, I can't go anywhere and go race, I can't promote that, I can't do that, we've got vehicles, we, it's a passion for many people in this town. It, I thought it's a good way to try to put it all together, where people can actually have a shot at doing this, and work towards something in a legal manner, and maybe hopefully this could grow, and we could do more with it. That's why I turned to the police department, I thought it was the first people to look to for support, and keep it legal. And if, if, if the cops are involved, well, then, we all know it's got to be legal. There would be high penalties, higher penalties for anybody, if they were caught doing something illegally, that were a part of an organization like this. So, nobody, we wouldn't have anybody in our part of it, that we would do this illegally. That's the whole reason behind doing it, is to keep it legal, keep it safe, and organized.
On that note, keeping it legal, again, one of the concerns from the residents was that this is an ongoing problem, the illegal street racing, and happens all summer long. I, I had our records clerk pull the number of traffic violations that took place on Stagecoach, near Summit, Sweetwater, and Foothill, and there were a lot of speeding citations. But within two years from this way going back, I was only able to find two notations, where somebody had called in for somebody racing on the roadway. Um, and one of those actually ended up being somebody spinning cookies in one of the school parking lots, and the other group was gone on arrival. Now, the residents basically said, well, hey, we never call these in, because they're gone by the time that you get there, uh, they put lookouts on either side of the street, so the police are notified, or they're notified if the police come, so they're gone by the time. We understand that. Um, their concern was also that this would encourage illegal street racing. I disagree with that. Wasn't able to find any statistics or evidence online that support that, um, but I do believe that by offering a legal outlet, it would probably lower the incidence of it actually happening illegally. Additionally, like, um, Mr. Zanetti said, we're going to have a set of rules, we're going to police ourselves on this. If we find somebody who, let's say, had signed up for the club, and was racing, they get pulled over by the police for exhibition of speed, or racing, or speeding in that area, um, we're going to suspend them from the program. They do it again, they're going to get kicked out of the program for good. So they're, they're basically losing their right to do this legally. Um, Alan said, there's a lot of people in town with a lot of really nice cars and trucks, and put a lot of money into them. Um, we've got a car show where you can showcase how they look, but more people are interested in how these cars work. This gives them an opportunity, so. Now, we've got long-term goals, sure, we would love to see a quarter-mile track, Christmas tree lights, timers, and everything up to the events come, but that's further on down the road. We need to, number one, see if there's... Um, we've checked with some other locales, Cheyenne PD, um, they actually have been trying to get this going for a while, and one of their officers in charge of their traffic unit, paying attention to how this happened, in spring. But Evanston, Wyoming, has drag races, Douglas used to have drug race, uh, drag races, um, Salt Lake City, um, one of their facilities is closing down. So, there's a lot of people that want the outlet to do this, that we think would be traveling to Rock Springs, in order to do it. Again, we wanted to look for three times this summer. Once a month, on a Saturday afternoon, probably for six hours, we're guessing, and logistically, we don't know how long it's going to take to do this, but it's going to be during daylight hours. Some of the concerns were the noise, which we understand, but, um, most of these cars are going to be not much louder than the next-door neighbor's lawnmower, going through their lawn, or some of the UTVs, or Harley-Davidsons, pickup trucks, to go down that road. Whoever designed that road and built it, looks like they had a dream to have drag races. I mean, it's the absolute perfect roadway. It's five lanes, ample space for cars, space clean, it's flat, level, and long. Whoever did the concrete work, did a really good job, smooth, and potable. We plan on policing ourselves, also, in a way of cleaning up. One of the concerns was, hey, when kids out there racing, their tire bottles broken, kid marks are fresh all over the place. By having an organization that's actually running this, we have volunteers. So, anyway, we, we would like to entertain any questions from the audience, I think maybe we wanted to do that after.
Um, during the petitions, but I have one question.
Sure.
You were tasked, um, last discussion on, uh, checking decibels, did you do that?
We haven't had an opportunity to go out there, because of the weather and his car, um, although I did do some online research, as far as the number of decibels for standard vehicles. A stock car, at a stock car track, typically puts out about 130. A lawnmower is about 90. Now, again, you need to take into consideration the distance from the object, the sound. A lawnmower right next door is probably going to be louder than a car revving its engine to 6,000 RPM, a quarter mile to half a mile, and is going to be a factor. A lot of things that can do it. We haven't been able to go out and do it. Roadways are just not...
Counselors, questions? This is your time.
Yeah.
Councilman Zadi?
I had been, Mr. Zanetti approached me a couple months ago, talking about this. And, and that's one thing, I mean, it is really geared towards the current, this locally. So, uh, what's the... And so it's looking at, where's the best place to do this? We have a wide road there. I live on Seattle Street, so I do wear cars every now and then, racing down. I have a problem, water goes off the fences. Um, but as I was looking through this and reading articles, finding articles, like, when there's an outlet like this, a lot of that kind of goes away. People are more apt to do it. Active. Are you anybody there? Something to it, as far as the top-ten, whatever, so it kind of gives an outlet for race. Um, so they're looking at, in street legal vehicles, and as we discussed before, I had questions, looking at that Stagecoach. Now, you're thinking of that area being possible staging area, where cars would be inspected, and by mechanics, making sure that...
Aspects will have an ASE-certified mechanic actually do an inspection on each vehicle. That includes brakes, um, one of the concerns, well, what if a wheel falls off one of these? We're going to be checking lug nuts, checking tire tread depth, going to make sure that they're street legal tires, and they're not drag tires. So, yeah, the inspection will be part of that. And again, with the staging area, we've got two schools there, and depending on, again, logistically, until we get out there with some cars, and do some measurements, figure out where the best, that place to start is going to be. We've got ample space for not just spectator parking, but for participants. Uh, one of the other concerns was people spinning their tires. We catch somebody spinning their tires in one of the parking lots at the school, they're out. Um, people who drag race spin their tires to warm the tires up, so they're a little bit stickier. That, there's going to be a designated place for that, going to be in control. Uh, it's not going to be a bunch of kids out there drag racing. Intentionally, do not want any high speed within these areas over here where the... Number one, the sound is an issue. And number two, we don't want to take a chance, cars are running out of control, and driving through backfins, clean. Starting in a safe place, stopping in a safe place, got plenty of real estate, slow down.
Mr. Zadi?
At the length, you're looking at 660, about an eighth mile, and speeds reached at that. I was just watching a video on the news, wanting staying five miles, about that, but that was doing a quarter, quarter of a mile in 11 seconds, probably reaching 120 or so. But, could speeds be hit an eighth?
You could have, you could have some incredibly fast cars, but we're guessing 70 miles an hour to 80 miles an hour. Um, the speed limit on that roadway is 35. Uh, I believe that we're going to probably keep it below interstate, for the most part, but I think an 80-mile estimate is our high estimate, and the races, each race is going to take about 11, 12 seconds for a GT 500 car. Some of our slower cars may take 10 seconds. They're going to be getting on it, 10-second, and I would say the speed, again, I haven't gone out there racing. My police car is a Chevy Traverse, so it's not going to go very fast, anyway. So, um, I, I would say that our speeds are going to be below 70. I can't guarantee that, maybe somebody's got a great car this week, maybe someone's got a GT 500.
That's why I think, you know, I think a lot of people who are racing, looking at 100-plus miles an hour, and you get...
I don't think...
Mine, and I just don't see that being possible through that...
Right.
...speed, but I don't know. Um, and that's, the other thing was the, the decibels, we had talked about that in the concern.
Right.
Um, and then have, have you guys approached the school?
We have not approached the school district. Until we basically get a yea or nay from you folks, I, I think that that would be a little bit premature. At a minimum, we would like to at least research a little bit further, maybe put a committee together, to address some of those other logistical issues, and...
Councilman Schlerer?
Okay, no time of day.
Sure. We are anticipating early afternoon. Maybe, for instance, the Rods and Rails Car Show is on June 15th. They're usually cleared up out of there around 2:00. If we did that as our first day of racing, some classic cars coming up, start maybe 2:00 PM, run until about 6:00 PM. But again, it depends on how many cars we have. We don't know. The first race is going to be kind of a test to determine how long it takes staging one. How long does it take to get cars in, run their race, to get back to one set of racers? Take 10 minutes. Go through the
Attention. Both?
I believe both Douglas and Salt Lake.
What was the?
You know what? I don't have all the answers.
Now, also, you said some participation would be voluntary.
It would be an on-duty thing. It would be similar to working at the Porter County Fair, similar, you know, parades. We have people there, officers, driving, supposed to. So, yes, my understanding is
It wouldn't be, still, we'd have to call in support?
Well, again, like the fair or like parades, there's sign up for traffic. So, there would be an expense.
Also, see, I have one other question. As far as damage to the roadway?
Right.
That be handled with the insurance? There was damage?
Again, that's a logistical area that I'm not exactly familiar with. I don't know. I know that there'll be skid marks. Perhaps if somebody crashed, rolled a car over, there's some damage. But as far as maintenance roadway, I believe that that would probably be a joint venture, city, part of the sponsor, and whatever our government.
Thank you.
And I wanted to step back just a little bit on your other question as far as the, well, we may have a later, someone else.
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Well, I assume you haven't spoken to the school district. Yes, this probably applies as well. But I believe the ground to the north is owned by Anadarko. South and west is L.A. Assume you haven't spoken to that. As far as on either side of the road, are you just utilizing or relying on the curb? Is there going to be any type of jury, Jersey barriers or anything like that, or is it just curb?
We would plan on having Jersey barriers. And the Jersey barriers would be back towards the beginning here of our start location. And that would be partially to keep the spectators back at a certain point. But as far as along this roadway, I don't believe we'd be Jersey barriers, actually. There's really nothing that can be damaged outside of curb. There's desert sagebrushing. I think that a Jersey barrier, as far as the damage that could be inflicted on city property, whether it be the Jersey barrier or the street, would be less without the Jersey barrier, is, gives an avenue for the vehicle to escape, opposed to being contained within.
Then you said there's going to be a top 10 list, but I assume there's going to be races to get into that top 10 list?
Correct.
Okay.
Tim, just one question. Are spectators allowed down track?
Our intention is spectators would not be allowed down track. Now, you're going to have, we're probably going to have volunteers down here as far as people who are watching for the finishes, emergency personnel. We'd probably stage emergency personnel somewhere right here on this side of the, this side of the schools, just because they'd be closer if there was anything in place. But spectators are going to stay back behind the start line. At least initially. I mean, I'm not sure where we can go. You know, if you had an actual drag race strip with bleachers and Jersey barriers, that'd be a different story. But even if we did have Jersey barriers out here, we would have a secondary area further on back where there would be limited for somebody.
Okay. Counselors, questions? Councilman Savage?
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay. I guess my number one question is, you and I were going to, you challenged me to a game, game of horse.
Okay.
I would practice. I would, especially if there was going to be 30 people watching. Now, with this, you've got an expensive car. I find it hard to imagine that this wouldn't, how would I practice for this race without illegal racing?
Without illegally racing?
Because you stated right away that there would be less illegal racing
Sure.
if we had this outlet. So, I'm lining up in my car, bragging rights or got 100 bucks on it or something. How would I do that?
That would be illegal.
Okay. So, we had a beer on it. How would, how would I practice?
Well, hopefully you would go someplace where you could do it legally. But we don't have that outlet. Now, if you were going to challenge me to a game of horse, I would just concede because I can't play basketball. So. Practicing starts acceleration.
Well, the insinuation is, is that there, with this outlet, there would be less illegal racing. That's what you stated. So, I'm questioning that premise because I would want to practice.
Tim, I'm sorry, Alan. Will you give him the mic? Because he's getting just a vacuum at home.
If somebody, if somebody's racing outside of that list, then it would be no different than not, any of us doing anything right now, not having a list or not doing anything. If somebody were racing outside that list, if somebody were practicing to get on that list, if they're like, I need to practice, I want to go race with these guys and be on that list. In order to be on that list, those people would have to become a part of the organization, meaning that they would have to pay dues to the association in order to even have a shot at that list. Which takes us back to where Tim was saying, if anybody ever got caught outside that, in that list, outside of their racing, they would automatically forfeit their position at all for even being on that list. Point being is, if you, if we have an organized group, I don't care if you're faster than me or not, if you're not in that group and not a part of that organization, I wouldn't, you know, that has nothing to do with our organized group. I mean, you can, you're not, you could tell me you're faster, but you can't prove anything until we take that inside the organization and you come out here and beat me inside that organization. And in order to get into that organization, you have to buy into that organization. And that's what I said earlier, where the penalties would be higher, simply because not only if you got busted by the cops doing something like that, you lost your shot at a chance for the list. So, a deterrent, if you will. There's, it would be senseless for anybody who wants to race and brag about racing if they're not a part of the organization, because if they're not part of the organization, then they wouldn't be faster than anybody on that list. You'd have to prove that. Does that make sense?
Any other questions? Thank you. Don't go far. We'll have some questions.
Sit back in the back.
Okay. Oh, look, Devin Brubaker is going to get up and allow us to race down the main runway at the airport. Welcome, Devin.
Absolutely not. Mayor, counselors, thank you for the time. And I guess while we're on that topic, I'm sure that some members of the audience may get up here during the public petitions and say, hey, we have an airport that never has any airplanes with a lot of pavement. We should go up there and race. Number one, we have lots of airplanes, almost 17,000 operations a year, all days of the week, all days of the year, even on holidays. So, that's a misconception. Number two, the airport is forbidden from hosting these by the airport compliance manual that the FAA publishes. And that publication states that if you can safely do it without shutting down the whole airport, then the FAA would consider it. But we have to jump through a lot of hoops to prove to them that we would maintain safety on at least one of the runways. Because two of our runways intersect, it is not possible for us to ensure that safety. So, we are forbidden from closing down the airport to host non-aeronautical events. So, hopefully that puts that to bed, but I'm sure there may be other questions.
So, you're saying no?
Yes, no. Just what I started with. So, hopefully that addresses those issues. And those that are not familiar with what's going on at the airport and think that we don't have any flights, I would love to meet with them and show them around the airport and, or follow us on our Facebook page, and you'll see how many flights we have. Just the other day, we had our hangar, our new hangar, completely full of hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of airplanes that were sitting in our hangar. So, and that was on a weekend. So, we're busy year-round. So, I'm here today to talk a little bit about two things. I know you have a long list, so I'll try to be brief. First one is the airport. And the airport had a phenomenal year in 2018. We were up 32.18% in passengers over 2017. And since 2016, we're up 47.7% on passengers. Phenomenal numbers. In 2018, we had almost 46 million pounds of aircraft land on our runways. Once again, we're busy. The 46 million pounds of aircraft is just the commercial operation, so cargo, airlines, air med. It does not count general aviation because we do not bill general aviation for landing fees. We had 1.2 million pounds of cargo processed through the airport on FedEx and UPS. And then our airline completion factor raised 1% in 2018 from 98% to 99%. So, 99% of our flights that were scheduled were completed, which is way above industry average. So, it's exciting to see reliable air service in our community. I mentioned a few minutes ago, our new hangar and general aviation facility. It has been exceeding our expectations. Our customers absolutely love it. And in the last 10 days, visitors to our general aviation facility that are coming solely because we have a hangar have generated over 50 hotel nights in our community. And along with those hotel nights, they're eating at our restaurants, shopping at our stores, spending money in our community. So, not only is the airport generating significant amounts of revenue that we were unable to do before, there's also a large amount of revenue coming into the community that we were not seeing before. So, it's exciting to see that. We have a couple aircraft inbound tonight to use the hangar as well. And they're paying a decent penny to reposition those aircraft from all over the country to use our hangar. This weekend, we had aircraft from Reno, Midway, Chicago Midway Airport, Aspen, Jackson, Bozeman. And that's just a couple that were coming just because we had a hangar. They weren't bringing people here. They were just coming for the hangar for the night or a couple nights, and their flight crews were staying. So, excellent economic impact for the airport. We're excited for that. Another item that's happening is the capacity purchase agreement. For those of you that have been on the council for a while, you're familiar with the capacity purchase agreement. For those of you that are new, I look forward to sitting down with you and talking with you about air service and how the future of air service is going to work in communities like ours, including Gillette, Riverton, and Sheridan. Right now, we operate on a year-to-year contract with SkyWest Airlines. Going into the future, we'll be operating on multi-year contracts with multiple cities as part of those contracts, which we are expecting economies of scale to help us cut the expense, not for, not just for local communities, but state as well. We are in discussions, actually, this afternoon at 2:00. I had a conference call with SkyWest to discuss the feasibility of third flight being added, at least during our peak travel seasons. And they're excited for that opportunity, starting hopefully this holiday season, then again next summer. So, we're working through those negotiations now. Couple other things real quick on the airport terminal project. The city council stepped up in a very big way a couple months ago and agreed to fund the schematic design phase for our terminal project. And we are well underway on that project. Unfortunately, we were delayed by about 30, I think it was 34 days, when the federal government shut down, because we had to wait for approvals from the FAA on our preferred alternative. The airport board, airport staff, and our consultants had several alternatives to pick from. And we chose an alternative that was the smallest square foot expansion and the least expensive option of all five, even though the most expensive option was probably the most glamorous, as Jim could attest to, building a brand-new terminal. We steered towards the idea of an expansion and renovation. So, we are waiting for official approval from the FAA on that to finish off where we need to go. We do have a big meeting next week with our architects and look forward to having things for you guys to see in the future, renderings, drawings, cost adjustments, things like that. On the funding side of that, we are hopeful, once again, to work with the county on funding so that the weight of that is not solely on the city. And our board and myself are working through those items as we speak. We hope to have resolution on that soon. We also have been informed by the FAA that we should hear within the next 20 to 25 days if we are successful in securing funding for the terminal. We requested, I believe, 11.6 million dollars. And we have a very good chance, based on the indicators that we're hearing out of the FAA, terminal projects have been rising towards the top in their evaluations. So, we're excited that we may have an opportunity. If we do not receive funding in this first, this round, 795 million dollars, Congress just appropriated, authorized 500 million more to go to airports. So, instead of just 795 million, there's now 1.295 million, or billion, I'm sorry, available for airports for us to go after. So, I'm hopeful that one way or the other the project's going to get funded. So, that's exciting. We're feverishly working on our budget. Matt has tight deadlines for us, March 8th, getting our budget turned in. And we're working on that. One of the projects that's going to be included in that budget is our fuel farm replacement. We have been scheduled for several years to replace our fuel farm. We've been saving up money, charging our customers a fuel flowage fee. So, we've been able to take a chunk out of it. We've also been able to secure grants from the state for part of it. And then the rest of it would have to be funded locally. So, in our budget or budget requests, there'll be information about that fuel farm. So, a lot of things happening at the airport, staying busy as always, and it seems to be getting busier by the day. I think Jim is running out of text messages if he has a limit, because I text him pictures all the time of our hangar full, and it's an exciting time for us. So, that's all I have on the airport. Be happy to answer questions about the airport before I put a different hat on for recycling.
Counselors?
You wore them down.
I think the drag racing wore them down. Thanks, Tim, wherever you're at. All right. So, the recycling center, and I'll be brief here. It's been in the news a lot. We've been working hard. Hopefully you guys have seen some progress. Over the holidays, it was pretty ugly, pretty brutal, mostly because our baler broke, our big baler that is fairly automated. It broke down middle of November, I believe it was November 14th, and it didn't get repaired until the end of January. They had to order custom parts for it and go through a lot of extensive repairs on it. It was just due to old age. It was failing. So, we got it back and running. You'll hopefully have seen a big improvement on the outside of the center since then. We also have started Saturday volunteer days, where we are open on Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And we encourage members of the community to come out and volunteer, students, youth, just residents in the community. We had a lot of people complaining that we were not open on Saturdays, so they couldn't come help volunteer. So, right away, within about 15 minutes, those complaints rolling in, we made the decision to open up on Saturdays. And we were excited to have quite a bit of turnout the first couple weeks. It really slowed down. Unfortunately, those that were complaining about us not being open on Saturdays, none of those showed up. So, you guys don't know anything about Keyboard Warrior, so. But anyway, so, the recycling center last year had a very successful year. We processed 1.25 million pounds of product that we saved from going to the landfill, which resulted in 4,900 cubic yards of space being saved in the landfill. That's equivalent to one and a half Olympic swimming pools. You gotta remember, that's compacted. So, that's a lot of waste, a lot of things that are being recycled. So, I brought some things here to demonstrate. Ream of paper. We processed 70,500 reams of paper, the equivalent of that last year, and recycled that. We processed 1.1 million bottles of water, or empty bottles of water, or the equivalent of 200,000 milk jugs on the plastic side. And the amount of cardboard that we processed saved 7,300 trees in '28 from having to be cut down to make new cardboard. So, phenomenal year. It's about a 40% increase in recycling that we processed in 2018. It's about a 40% increase in recycling that we processed in 2018 versus 2017 under the new organization, the new board. The volunteer Saturdays have been working out. We are working on a new layout on the outside for the drop-offs. That starts with a garage door that's going to be installed on that side of the building. And the cardboard cage is going to be moved and expanded. And there's going to be a garage door right into the cardboard cage so we can move that cardboard inside a lot more efficiently. There was a $1,000 donation from R S and B Bank to help us cover the cost of that door. So that's very much appreciated. And then after we get that done, we're going to lay out the outside and hopefully get new bins, if we can find the money for it, to clean it up and hopefully not have it look so messy all the time. I just encourage residents to only bring products that are accepted. And we have the list on our Facebook page. We created a new list that has pictures and everything. We do not take treadmills. We do not take mattresses. We do not take dog feces. We do not take bags of leaves. We do not take glass. So please take those, put them in your regular trash at the recycling. So I think that is all I have. I did speak with the mayor about some possible ordinance changes in the future about recycling that I'll be happy to work with the waste committee. I believe there's a waste committee and we'll hopefully work with you on those going forward. And I just want to do a shout-out to our board members who are doing a lot to keep the center running. Got Nick Seals, who's one of your city employees, Michelle Foot, who runs Wyoming Waste, Steve Harton, a local attorney, Maria Mortensen. You guys may know her from downtown U R A. She's the chairman down there, I believe. And then myself. So just a big shout-out to those guys who are all stepping up and trying to keep the center.
Well done. I can tell you that it's definitely a need in the community. We had long discussion about this and hope to see it continuing in wherever we can help. I hope we can be there for you. Counselors?
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Devin.
You guys are too easy.
Okay, the item number three, the Greater Little Mountain Coalition is rescheduled. So Judy Owens with Star Transit?
Nice to see you all tonight. I'll make this really short and sweet. Thanks for your continued support, Star Transit. Remember, last time I was here, I talked about Google Maps and how I was getting the stops on Google Maps. That's up and running. And we also have gone out and got an app. So people can download an app. It's called Route Shout 2.1. They can go to their playlist and download that. Once they load that, they can scroll to the bottom of it and it says Sweetwater County Transit Authority. They can punch on that. Then they have options to be able to see the route. They can look and see where the bus is at on the route, what time the bus is going to get to certain stops. And there's different ways that they can look at the app to be able to tell where the buses are. So we're pretty excited, you know, the nice warm weather we have here in Wyoming and people standing out at stops is very good. So they can sit in their house and say, oh, the bus is right up the street. I better run out and catch it. So that we actually see where the bus is real-time. And we, last year, we provided 42,500 rides. And of those rides, 23,500 of them were on the route. And now the route side increased by about 13 rides. So we are still out there moving people and we do appreciate your continued support. Did you have any questions?
Counselors? Thanks, Judy. Appreciate the service that you provide the community and good luck this next year. We need you here.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. The last presentation, Mark Cott.
Just going to have a citizen comment. Counselor Savage encouraged me to have a few PowerPoints. I have 10 slides. Help me out. Mr. Mayor, I'd first like to thank you and the city council members for your hard work and excellent service to the community and also to city staff, who we find always responsive.
Thanks, Mr. Cott. We appreciate that.
The reason I'm here tonight is I'd like to encourage the city council to engage your neighborhoods and constituents in a night sky conversation which may lead to maybe a lighting plan for the City Rock Springs. Map of the United States, it's easy to see where we have dark sky opportunities and where we don't. A little bit light in here, but on western United States, we still have plenty of opportunities to chart our future as far as providing dark skies for our children. The blue map at the bottom, you can see some red lettering barely, but that's the City Rock Springs. To the left is Salt Lake. To the north, in the yellow lettering, is actually the Jonah and the Anacline. This is obviously prepared a few years back. Zooming in on Rock Springs is taken from College Hill. We see a mix of lighting, yellow, white. It's not a conversation what is necessarily good or bad lighting. Each one of those lights provide a specific purpose, a specific need for our community. Maybe the conversation is, you know, more how lighting is done, what types of fixtures, what type of color wattage, what is the cost? What do we want to accomplish with lighting as a community? To talk about that in a little more detail, let's just look outside here at City Hall. This is Broadway. You know, the purpose down here is economic development. We're trying to preserve a historic character of the area. We have a retro lighting fixture with high-pressure sodium light that replicates incandescent lights of years ago, provides safety. I think this is great lighting that accomplished its purposes. It's high-pressure sodium vapor. There's LED lighting that is cheaper in this day and age. And I know the city engineering department's looking hard at that. But again, this is some lighting that I guess really accomplishes the purposes intended. That same purpose, that same lighting goes over the A Street Bridge, up Grant Street. And at the top of the Grand Street, we see a change. And the change... We got ahead of ourselves here real quick. There was a change. And it's more to the high-pressure or to the LED bright white lighting. And I thank R.J. Peeper for this picture. He took the picture from the top of Grant Street. And you can see downtown how it looks with high-pressure sodium vapor light. This is the view you would see today. He took the same color of lighting that the replacement bulbs on the top of Grand Street are and just basically inserted that same color into the photograph. What we're trying to get at here is that lighting will change the character. And what type of lighting you have determines that character and it's our choice. Maybe we can have the white lighting, maybe it's a different fixture. Maybe it's more of a down-focus fixture, but you'll lose that old candelabra type of look with the fixtures we have today. Something to think about. Just a little bit about lighting. The white lights are, light color is measured in degrees Kelvin. A 5,000-degree Kelvin light is white. On the 2,700-degree side, it's more yellow. All of these lights can be purchased in LED. City of Phoenix went with the 2,700-degree Kelvin lights. They replaced 100,000 streetlights with that due to citizen concerns. It can be done. There's choices. And not every light in the city has to be the same color. But, you know, when we go from sodium vapor to LED, it doesn't necessarily have to be the brightest light off the shelf. This is my street, Rose Crown Circle. Ed Markham lives on that street. This is the only streetlight on that street. And it's sodium vapor. It's definitely yellow. It's down-focused. A lot of good features. Probably needs to be replaced. Sodium vapor is not cost-effective anymore, LED. I guess what color of light are we going to replace this with and who's going to make that choice? Are the residents going to be involved in that discussion? Or is it going to be P P N L just comes in and says, here's your light? Or can we have a conversation about it? I guess we, my wife has taken some back off our back porch in the direction of that light. That was the eclipse of the moon. It's really eclipsed here. But we, you know, the opportunity to still see some dark skies in Rock Springs is probably pretty important to some of us. For that, R.J. Peeper, Kale Family, Linda for the picture of the moon. And a couple references, Frank Prevedell is going to be here tonight to support me. I guess Frank couldn't make it tonight. But I know he has talked to Counselor West about lighting, so that's all I have.
Mark, most of these lights on the arterial roads, they are Rocky Mountain power lights, correct? Paul, you know?
Good portion of lighting is a power. Have control of the type of lighting. Have the right. Light switch. And metal lighting.
Thanks, Paul. Counselors, questions?
Your Honor.
Counselor Zadi?
Question on Grant Street. My... Yeah.
Counselor Zadi, those are lights. What a way we have been to... Does that light get down on the road? Metal light from the top and down.
The brighter LED. How come? Color of the light. The 5,000 Kelvin.
I'm not...
Or...
I'm not... Are LED?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So the orange lights are not LED.
They're high-pressure. How they are...
Just an answer, you know, like one of the points I was trying to make is you can get LED lights in different colors. And so you can get a more yellow LED versus a more white LED. And, you know, what character do you want downtown? And maybe that's something we think about. But just to try to engage more of a conversation, I don't expect a result or, you know, I'm not, you know, mad about any particular light. It's just, you know, there's enough change in the shift from the sodium vapor lights to the bright white LED lights, you know, might warrant more of a conversation about it.
Appreciate that, Mark. That does warrant some conversation. And I wondered the same, but it seemed like everybody was moving from the yellow, especially in an office space, to the white because they didn't like the yellow. And now it seems like it's migrating back from the white back to the yellow outside for the reasons that you've just brought up.
And there's other reasons, you know, the bright white lighting, like 60% of all animals are nocturnal. So, I mean, bright white lighting interferes with bird migrations. The other thing is the American Medical Association, in 2016, did a study. And lighting above 3,000-degree Kelvin is more harmful to human health for disruption of circadian rhythms, melatonin levels, and disruption of sleep patterns. And so they actually recommend city lighting below 3,000-degree Kelvin. These, I mean, those are some things you can go online. You can find a lot of things online, some true, maybe not so true. But I think at least, you know, looking at the color of the lighting, the type of fixture, and the purpose it's trying to serve, it doesn't hurt. So.
Appreciate that.
Your Honor.
Counselor West?
Yeah, I did have a pretty lengthy discussion with Prevedell, who informed us that yellow lighting is light, white lighting. And here we are, stuck with yellow lighting. Do a little homework on that and learn more than... But the points we got was kind of what Maricomo's already alluded to. P P N L wouldn't power pull. And discussing with engineering and Herman, that probably would not be upgraded in a lifetime.
Okay. Have you spoke to Warren Buffett at all? Have you spoke to Warren Buffett at all about this?
No, I have spoken to Frank and he believes that the lighting in the City of Superior was better in the 1950s.
Well, it does warrant some conversation and I appreciate it, Mark. That was good information. We'll... Oh, do we have a Counselor Savage?
Yeah. I guess I can ask Counselor West, but Paul, so do we have a contract with P P N L to provide city lighting? Because at winter time, light field is about $18,000 a month. So what you suggested was that they provide us whatever they want to provide us. Is there a contract?
Yeah, we have a... We pay a month. Free. And then offer. So we have special... Check. Yeah. All of them. Are doing. Ask. Mark. Oh.
Any other questions? Thank you. This is going to bring us on to the public hearings and then into the petitions, if you all can just bear with us shortly. Public hearings, item number one, the public hearing on the applications for renewal of microbrewery, winery, restaurant, retail, limited, bar and grill, and resort liquor licenses for the period of April 1st, 2019, through March 31st, 2020, of which will act under new business item number one. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Hearing none. This is going to turn us over to the petition section of our agenda, which if there's anyone wishing to address the city council on any issue, this is your time to do that. And if you would please just grab, you have to come into the podium, grab a microphone and speaking to the mic, state your name and issue, and we'll try to get through this. Just by a show of hands, how many wish to speak on one of these issues? So we can, we might have to set a time. So we can, we might have to set a time. Okay, we're okay. Come on down to the podium. I'm not sure if we have a mic in the back podium, Matt, do we? Just the front podium? So you have to come to this one, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's easier to come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Madhu Anderson, and I'm a resident of Rock Springs. And I have been volunteering at Rock Springs Animal Shelter for a while. Sorry, this is my first time speaking in front of so many big people, and English is my second language. So if I get nervous, please be easy on me. I wanted to, I'm here to bring some concerns, which I think they are urgent to be addressed. Certain things which I saw and observed when I was volunteering at the shelter, that the shelter still uses gas chambers, which is a very cruel and inhumane method of euthanizing our pets, like homeless pets or even feral animals. The animals die a long, painful death, and a lot of states in America have already banned these methods of euthanasia because it's extremely inhumane. So I urge the city of Rock Springs to please ban these gas chambers as soon as possible. Like right now, we should remove the gas chambers right tomorrow from this shelter. Other concern I have is what I observed, that animals are not given blankets and toys. These dogs and cats sit in these kennels like all day, every day, till they get adopted or till they get euthanized. And these dogs especially get really insane and crazy if they don't have anything to play with. There are a lot of dog toys and blankets are donated by a lot of generous people, citizens of Rock Springs. But I have seen that no, none of them was given to the, any of the dogs. There were like almost 20 kennels. And when I was volunteering there a month ago, a couple of months ago, I was going there every single day, and I never saw any blanket, any toy in the kennels. So I feel really bad, these dogs, if they get more blankets or toys or anything, any interactions, they will be more adoptable. And the third thing which I noticed is most of the dogs just sit there every day, and there are not enough volunteers, or volunteers are not allowed to walk the dogs over the weekend or long weekends. I was going there every day, and I would spend four to five hours just walking the dogs and socializing with the cats, so at least they get some love and affection from humans, so they will become more adoptable when any potential adopter approaches them. So I will request them, request all of you folks to please, if I'm on TV or not, I don't know, but I will urge everybody, please reach out to your city council member and ask them to help you in banning the gas chambers. And please give toys and blankets to every single dog and cat over there, and please give them exercise every single day. Thank you so much.
Madhu?
Yes.
Hold one tight. Anybody question? This is one issue that we, Animal Control, Humane Society, and Animal Companion Committee, I've been inundated with. We've spent quite some time together. We've spent some time looking into some of these issues. And it seems to me, a lot of groups with the same goal, but can't get along. That's what I think. Whether it be Humane Society, Animal Control, or Companion Animal Committee, seems like we all have the agreeance that we need to take care of animals, we don't want to kill animals, yet it seems like we're not moving where we should be. Councillor Savage and Councillor Windorf, I know have been a part of this also. So what I had requested, just so you know, I believe the Animal Committee, Companion Committee meets every fourth Tuesday, which is the 26th. And I believe after that, I am going to call a meeting on the March 6th with all groups together to discuss and hash out the issues with Animal Control, with Humane Society, and the Companion Animal Group, to see if we can focus again, start working together, and resolve some of these issues. That just occurred yesterday, and I want to get the Animal Companion Group time to have their meeting. And then we'll schedule a meeting for everybody to be invited, even the general public, because I think we should all be in it for the animals. I'm an animal lover as well. I've looked into your concerns. I know the concerns of the PD with the toys, the blankets and the like. There's health issues there. There's issues where blankets and toys are given to animals if they don't chew them and they choke and the like. But I think the Animal Control has come a long way from where they used to be. And the issue usually becomes feral cats when it comes to euthanasia. And I'm not quite sure what the right answer is there. But nonetheless, I think we all need to sit down at the table, have some discussion, and see if we can create a plan and move forward in the better of the community and the animal. So if you'd bear with us, you're sure invited to that meeting as well, and I just want to make that public announcement.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. I just have one quick question, that when feral cats, like or any other feral animals like skunk or any other, no what animals could be caught and trapped and brought to the Animal Control, I, in my opinion, no animal deserves to die a horrible, painful death. We could use lethal injections, sodium pentobarbital or any other thing, but gas chambers have to be banned right away. That's a very urgent issue. We will talk about that in the meeting too?
We will. We'll hash out quite a few of this. And the City of Rock Springs actually uses lethal injection when it comes to domestic, you know, a dog that can't be adopted or like. But usually the ferals, you can adopt the feral cats. We get a lot of them, and they've come a long way trying to find homes for each and every one of these. I think everybody has the same goal. I'm just very confused and over just being in this office a month, the vast majority of the traffic coming into my office is related to either Companion Animal, Humane Society, or Animal Control. And I think it's time we sit together in a group, hash out the problems, and create a plan forward, and start doing the good work that we should be doing.
Okay.
Councillor Zadi?
Got a question. It comes like the feral cats, if you're gassing feral cats, is that more of safety for the employee?
Mr. Kestner, that is safety for the employee at that point, isn't it?
That's what I was thinking. The feral cat with the needle could get a little... What other options?
Councillor Savage?
Feral cats is an issue. Well, first of all...
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's great that, this is the first I heard of it, excited about that. We could do a lot better. And I always encourage people, adopt, don't shop. We also need a real strong foster program to get those animals out of animal boxes. And it is harder to adopt. Don't like to go down and it's tough with the hours. So we had a foster program that that individual could market that, their animal, their Facebook, adopted a buck. I would also say that feral cats, all over the world, especially all over Arizona cities, Wyoming, that's still using gas. So the other cities have found another. That's some out. Very modern, very more human gas change. But still, still, I get calls from groups all over. And pressure on them, come out of that for us. That's still...
Will the meeting be in the council chamber?
It will. That is the plan. I'm thinking the, it's going to be in the evening, probably six, seven o'clock. I'm waiting to hear back from Juanita Perez on what they decide with their group, so they can have their meeting first.
Will it be on the 26th of this month or 6th of March? 6th of March?
Yeah, it's Wednesday.
Am I invited? Can I come?
Yes, absolutely. It'll be, it'll be open.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your passion for the animals. We'll, I think we just need to all get together, have a discussion, and see where it...
Thank you. And can I, what we discussed when I met you, is the same letter, so can I give it to people here?
You can.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. Yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah. So with that, this is going to end up being a long night. Thank you, Madhu. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on any issue? This is your time.
This is Gary Zanetti, Allen's little brother, younger brother, actually, a little bit bigger. Talking about the street racing. Mr. Savage, you had a question there of how practice, how you would go about practicing for this. I took it more literal. We're in, we're in 2019. Simulator, online gaming, things like this. Let alone, we just had dynar days at the college. That was quarter mile drag racing on a dyna. These are the activities of those of us that have passion for racing, passion for automobiles, the things that you see developing in our community already. All the things that we have is right on the lagoon. Race cars, small block Chevys, right down the road. They actually have this out there. Our community doesn't. Whenever we do these types of things, we have to travel for it. Are they our cars? No, they're not. That's what we want to do. We want to go out and we want to play with our hot rods. A lot of money goes into them, a lot of pride goes into them, a lot of effort goes into them. Some are fast. My case? Not really. It's just an A driver. Would I like to put my old 23T bucket out there? Heck yeah, I'd like to do that. It's a passion. Other things that we have also is like they have a raceway, which is officially closed from what I understand. No official racing going on there or anything. They do have days in which I've heard guys going down and doing practice days, where they have to buy their insurance, whatever it is. I'm not sure about all the ins and outs, but they do have an opportunity where if they wanted to do it with their own vehicles, that you could do this also. I'd also like to state something that was missed in it, a little bit of nervousness up here earlier and now. Wyoming's always supported racing from the early 1900s. From what I understand, there's a law on the books, setting, close down any state highway, county road, city road, for this purpose. But the state of Wyoming has always been in support of this, back from the horse and buggy days, the horseless buggy days. Something else that I wanted to mention out here, any damage to the streets. If this organization is to expand and grow with enthusiasm that we see out there, hopefully there'd be enough funds that we can just go ahead and donate money to streets in Rock Springs, fix potholes. I don't see any potential of any real amount of damage being done from what we're doing. But in event that it does, here, if there's any extra, the organization would be more than willing to do it. And if it's not for repairing what we have, repairing other issues that we have out there. Go ahead and support our community. That's what we're here for. As far as I'm looking at trying to get some of the illegal racing off the road, yes, in a personal being, and coming from the other side of law, I'm comfortable sitting up here. I've been up here once or twice, not in this setting, but coming from that side of it, and looking at what goes on in our community, there's a lot that goes on behind our backs we're not aware of. I was one of those that used to do that. I'm very aware of that. If we have different outlets for these types of things, that does curb what is going on behind the scenes. The peers, the people out there that, hey, do you see the little kid out there with his hot rod that thinks he has something, putting it in the car show? Or is he going behind the scenes to try and prove something? When he sees this, when he sees his peers and has that support, has that guidance to doing something in a legal manner, in support of the community, they really want this. I'm up here speaking for myself. You look at me 13, 15 years ago, you wouldn't see me standing up here. Today, I'm standing up here. I am in support of this. I'm in support of our community. And I appreciate everybody's time and effort in this tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that. We welcome Mr. Kent Perenna, past councillor person, City of Rock Springs.
Mayor, councillor, glad to be here. Glad to see your shining faces on this side of the bench. But anyway, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Kent Perenna, and I've been in the motorsports promotion business for probably 30 years plus, both racing and promoting. 20 years at the events complex, running motorsports program out there. And currently, my company has events going on in Arizona and Southern California. But what I want to do is address councillor Savage's question on practice. I suspect if you're shooting hoops, you got a quantitative way to measure how good you are, how many baskets you get. At this level of racing, there really is no way. There's no time, timers, you can time yourself. You're out there, it's a flag start on this level, and how do you know? You get professional, you get a professional track with timers and stuff like that. Then you can measure your reaction time, and you can practice it. But at this level, you can't. And it's been proven around that once an organized event starts, the extracurricular racing dies down. I think Tim's right on that. And the fact that now it's fair, judged, there's no argument, if I was, you left too early, or I left too late, or you went faster because your buddy's got the stopwatch, now it's fair. And it does shut it down. So I'm in total favor of this. I'm not a member of the association yet, but I will be. And I've talked to Allen at length, and I'll offer any support I can for this. It's going to be a good deal. Hopefully in the future, it'll parlay into a permanent drag, that we worked on years ago, but it didn't go. Hopefully this time it will. Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perenna. Councillor Shalata?
I just like to make some comments. I remember when I was out at the fairground, going, had the sand rags out there. Guards, spectators, spectators, like, wished, had something out that fairground in, instead of city glass. But he actually, spectators having... But, but a great event. I think they helped once a month, a couple times back in the day. I don't believe anybody ever got hurt. Watch, but I don't know whether, why it stopped. I know that when high school rodeo, high school town, had trailer face, comedy, that property, that area, it's worth it. Better, for permanent, for you.
Thank you, councillor.
City councillor Dave Daniels, Rock Springs resident. I just want to throw my support into the drag racing also. I'm a little bit older than what you probably think a normal drag racer looks like these days, but it gives a place to go. I have two sons, mid twenties, early thirties now. We, I moved here four years ago from Colorado Springs. They got involved in legal drag racing. I got them off the street doing it. I got them off the street doing it. I was probably the, the reason they were out there doing it because I was helping them build fast cars. But once they left the street, they understood how important it was to be safe. I think this would give us an opportunity. I mean, sure, all of you, like myself, drive down Doer and have some guy in a diesel wanna race you because he can wind it up and blow smoke on. Maybe we can get him to stop doing that. As far as practice, I have a very expensive class, not practice. Go race it if you let us, but I'm not practicing. Have a somewhat expensive pickup, still not practice. Go out and do it the right way. I think there's some opportunities. I think with people a little bit older, maybe being involved and stopping the kids that I see. Saying, hey, here's a place to go do this. Maybe we can curb some of, and curb some of the noise. I hear them. I, I hear it all the time. I don't, I live behind, I hear them. I think this gives us a chance. Because every time I hear especially a motorcycle wind up out on stagecoach, I worry about what we're gonna do. Put it in a place where there, there's a little bit more control, we can not worry about. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Not yet. There you go.
My name is Natalie Powell. I am a resident of Rock Springs. I just wanna put my opposition, strong vehement opposition to the street drag racing in residential areas. I think there's no question that there's obviously an interest in it. Obviously, there's some passion behind it. It has no place in residential areas. I have a house that backs up to Summit. I can speak from experience of eleven years of living in my house. There are people practicing every day in the summer. It disrupts my sleep. It disrupts my family's sleep. I worry every day that one of those cars is gonna lose control, crash through my fence. I have four kids. I'm not interested in this becoming a thing on, in my neighborhood. The noise would be very loud. And I'm not interested in hearing that for six hours, once a week, once a month, whatever it starts out to be, I guarantee you it will start to be more. I worry about the wear and tear on the streets. Taxpayer money went into building those streets. I worry about the promises of who's gonna repair those, who's gonna pay for them. Guarantee the schools are not gonna be interested in people parking in their parking lots. There's also a park behind Stagecoach that wasn't mentioned. That park is used heavily in the summertime and in the fall. I know me and my kids like to play at that park. I worry about, you know, are they gonna shut that down? How's that gonna work? How's that gonna look? I feel that cars going sixty, eighty miles an hour, even if it is a short amount of space, if they lose control, what does that look like for people walking in the desert, people recreating in the desert? That's a very heavily densely populated recreational area for people. Those neighborhoods use those walking paths, biking, running, walking pets. It's used heavily. I can only speak to what my experience is, but I do know that there is a petition against it coming out. I am not against it. In theory, I think it has a place. It does not have a place in residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Fifty percent chance?
Hello? Hello?
There you go.
Okay, I'd like to do a petition on Lion Call Road. We've got a very deep ditch on the north side. We have these floods in the eastern side of town there. It washes out that fill they put in there. It needs to be addressed again. Because if you'd ever get, you passing these horse trailers and stuff going in and out, if they'd ever shift, you're gonna take the ditch and you're gonna have it wrecked. You ain't gonna go down a nice smooth strip and get out of it. It's just gonna be trash. I'd like to, and they have filled it in once before, and it don't take long. You got a whole hillside of field dirt there. Just dump it in and smooth it out and you're done. If you wanna do something more on it, Red Rocket or whatever, that's one of the deals there and is. And I'd hope that would get addressed, but then as for the racing in town, no, we got a place where, just like you said, we used to have a place out north by the fairgrounds. Get a place, secure away, it already has bleachers, not standing around citizens. Thank you.
Counselman Savage?
Thank you, Your Honor. Say that, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well. What did, what did you say? You wanted done with the ditch? You wanted, wanted lusty?
It used to be, kinda like the interstate ditch, it was nice and smooth. So if you'd ever get run off the road, you wouldn't have a wreck. But right now, the Lion Call Road has a ditch this deep, that wide. So if you'd ever have to get run off the road, you're crashing.
But by the highway?
You ain't gonna be able to drive out and smooth it out. It's trash.
Yeah, towards, towards the corrals, Lion Call Road.
Yeah, during corrals.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Mr. Cowsit is taking some notes, I'm sure. It's probably just been washed out from recent blood. Counselman Savage?
Because the issue, a couple years, a lot of it. Wasn't nothing, floods in houses, things further up the street.
You gotta put, you gotta put a couple dams out in the run area. Fill up and fill another one up and just let it drain off flow. You've seen it.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, we do have detention basins up that drainage?
On the wrong side of the road. They're on the north side.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Windorf?
I have a question from Cowsit. How are those culverts holding up? Because I know there for a while, they were damaged pretty bad, which only made the bad problem even worse.
I can't say on the north side, but there, I don't believe there is any on the south side of the road. There's a couple roads that go on, just two tracks.
Because that one that collapsed, wasn't that coming off a sentry that one summer, when that one collapsed? Or the damage just?
Yeah. Well, that was, water flows whichever way. You know, it comes through the outlaw parking lot, covered up with that much silt, whatever, you know. If it don't go that way, depends which side it rains, it'll come down Lion Call Road.
I was just wondering if the culvert's a good change.
There is a bridge there that can divert it by the horse corrals, but that's gotta be a little levy there to make a drain though. You can look at it, you'll see where. Next time. Thank you.
That's what I was wondering though, because a couple times I had checked, they were pretty full of silt in them. I was just wondering.
And they do that.
Clean them all back up again. I know that only adds to the problem. They're, they're filled, so.
Oh, his concern is most prox.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Counselor, any other discussion? Please do.
Is this it? Am I on?
That's it.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to address the drag racing, put my support behind it. I don't know you guys personally or anything like that.
Could we, just to start off, just your name?
Sure, Cindy Scarland. I've lifelong resident, lived here my whole life. I just wanna say that my husband and I have been, probably for the last eight years, we've been going to Evanston and doing their drag races. As far as, you know, I don't know really what people, what your conception or, or, you know, what you think of drag racing, but I'm, I just don't want people to think that it's like what you see on street outlaws or YouTube or whatever, you know, that's not, that's not what real life, you know, just your average everyday people do when you drag race. I can tell you that in, just an estimate, just personally, I've probably been down a drag strip over there two, three hundred times. Not one time in all my eight years of going to Evanston, watching drag racing and participating in drag racing, have I ever seen a street car wreck. As far as damage to the roads, I don't, that to me, that's not a concern. You're not gonna have, you know, if we were talking super high powered race cars, you know, doing burnouts with slicks and everything like that, you know, that might be a concern. I just, I think that, I think there's a lot of misconception out there about what drag racing is, you know. Yeah, drag racing through town, that's dangerous. Nobody wants to see that. I think, I agree with every, you know, the comments that people have made about this will give people a place to do this and, and a time to do it, and it's gonna be organized. You have the police support, which, I mean, what more can you ask for? That, that's about as safe and as legal as it gets. You know, I understand, I, I live on Homestead, so we're right over there. I, I hear two o'clock in the morning. You know, you, you can hear people racing down there. I don't actually know if it's racing, cars each other racing. I think a lot of times it's just people with their own car, you know, going out there, because there's nowhere else to do it. You don't have a chance to, to try out your vehicles. I think one day a month or a few hours a day on, in the summer on a Saturday. You know, I don't think that's too much to ask for. You know, everybody, I, I understand you wanna take your kids to play in parks, but you know, that, that, we're not talking a lot of time here. And I also think, give it a shot, you know, just let us do this. See how it goes one time. If it picks up interest, maybe do it another time and see how it continues. And then, you know, if it does get to where it's a bigger thing and, and there needs to be a more permanent drag strip, you know, I, I think after that, if it gets to that point, you know, then that can be addressed, but I, I think for right now, you know, there's a, there's a huge car culture in this town. There's huge truck culture in this town. You know, I think this would give people a place to do this and, you know, with the police support, that would give community and police officers, you have that, especially in this day and age when there's so much animosity, you know, boards cops, boards police, whatever. I just think this, I think it's a good idea. I think at least give it just one shot. See what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counselman Zadi?
I've got a, just a quick comment, because it's been brought up a couple times. It's the playground on Stagecoach behind the school. I pulled up full earth here and I'm measuring the distance from Stagecoach behind the school, it's like five hundred. I don't know if there's any way that that area would be affected, or any way that it could be affected by taking place. So, that's a quick observation that I made here, looked at.
Appreciate that. Any others?
Real quick, name's David Prost, been here seven years. Touch on the practice, on all things, ride a motorcycle. Big, big bagger. I also got a racing. For that, every time me and my buddy leave a stop line, down, let's get it, go fast. Once you get into something organized, which we had kinda organized. At an undisclosed location, and if you ask me, I believe the fifth. First time we went to the Evanston Drag, all of that came to an end. And me and the couple guys, we're always racing again, away from every red light here and kinda look at each other, smile. Eh, can't wait till next weekend, really, see who's got what.
Appreciate that. Counselman Savage? Where, where do they race in Evanston? Where's it at?
There is a hypoxia drag, there's a deal about it, for a hundred miles away. For me and a couple of my friends, we can load our bikes. I understand none of this. But, me and my buddies, we can load our bikes up. I've been digging, down there, up the guy run business, he's got stuff, he's got him along with a couple of people in this town. I think, hey, they're not as fortunate as to be able to leave town. Give them any of that.
Where, where is it physically in Evanston? Where?
I don't really know Evanston that well, but it's north of town.
It's north of town, on the highway, like where you turn at Bear, the Bear River?
No, it's whole area. But I mean, it's, it's a sure enough track.
Appreciate that. Any others? I did receive a couple of emails in opposition. Don't see anybody speaking much in opposition to Mr. Jeffrey, and we're lucky that's all he hit us with. So anyone else wishing to speak, council will eventually take action on this. So if you wish to speak, either in support or against, this is your time to do so, or on any issue.
Hello, my name's Uriah Fisher, resident of Rock Springs for all my life. I'd like to just speak for this drag racing. I think at least giving it a go this summer might give the city an ability to see how it's run and how much interest there is in an event like this. And then, you know, as we get more stats on that, we could come back to the table and maybe get something more permanent outside of town or like out at the fairgrounds, you know, I'd like to see something like that take off. I feel there's opportunity. I feel there's opportunity with the drag strip there in Salt Lake City closing down. Um, you know, we're in a good location, kinda central to several other bigger cities. And I think if this ever took off and got a lot of city and county support, that it could be a big event for us, you know? And, uh, draw a lot of extra tourism, uh, and, uh, I think it'd be a good thing. So I would like to see it, uh, at least go for a summer and see where we go. Give it a chance and then take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, any others?
Your Honor, I just have one quick question.
Councilman Zotti?
It says, and you're talking about the events complex. I'm on the events complex board and it's brought up multiple times. And it was in the nineties, Kent, correct me if I'm wrong, when it was brought up to vote to expand the events complex and that didn't include a drag strip at that point, it was voted down. It was brought up again, uh, for an expansion for the events complex, didn't include a drag strip, but then it was voted down. Every time we have something come up to try and expand that and to, uh, fit, match the demand of the residents of Rock Springs for expansion for recreation, be it at the events complex or whatever, it gets voted down. We need public support for this. It comes up again, I said it many times, many times as I've been on the board. We need support to help grow our facilities to accommodate the recreation. So when something like this comes up, please, please support it. It's a value to the community. See what can be done with what we have right now, the events that are held out there. Think what more can be done if we add the ability to expand the facility. So that's just my plug to the complex. Please support it. If you want things to expand, you want more opportunities in Rock Springs and Butter County, that's the time.
Thank you, Counselor.
Your Honor?
Uh, Councilman West?
Just a quick comment. I, I did receive a couple emails on this matter. Part of the complaint too was just whether or not this is a public hearing. It kinda feels like it tonight, but it wasn't advertised. So if we are gonna vote on this, I was wondering if it'd be a good idea to have it a public hearing. Um, I've read a lot, seen a lot on Facebook, for and against it. I suspect the majority are in support of it, um, but I think that might be a good idea. One quick question I asked earlier, has it ever been, just for, uh, him and Alan, have you looked elsewhere, anywhere else to have this? Or have you just focused on Stagecoach? Kind of comments there, and I hate to continue this on, but.
I'm only from the mic. You gotta come to the mic, sorry. Everybody at home is getting a blank cloud right now.
There you go.
Okay. All right, so as far as other locations, one of the things that we wanna make sure that we do with this is, this is a Rock Springs PD endorsed event, so we wanted to stay within the city limits. There were several other suggestions, Foothill Boulevard. Um, Foothill Boulevard is a main thoroughfare in and out all along. It doesn't make sense. It's flat, it's level. Um, somebody suggested one night, and it's a state highway, taking, closing down a state highway. Saturday, probably. There are other roadways in town that work, but nothing blocked off. Alternate traffic routes, um, flat, it, I have traveling. Also. Looked at one of them. Now, a couple of the concerns brought up as far as the playground. We understand. We know that this is somewhat, um, boys' watch hours. My second home, lived up by Mr. Savage, right on the backside of the interstate. I heard the state day in. Hop on. Ruckus. How I live about it. I feel. Day in. I get used to the noise. Um, not pleasant, but I don't think. Believe me, if you guys wanna give us enough money for a drag strip and flex, my pockets are open. Hand it this way, Alan and I will get it going. We'll order everything. We'll, I'll go out there and double stand. We would love that. It is, right now, we don't have that. Have any level. Somewhat. I feel for you, do, but I think long-term, I'd like them to go, and organize, and do it safely. And we do it in a way. Give Rock Springs revenue, talk in hotels, restaurants. Talk to the gentleman, tailor his bike, trailer their cars. Um, I just ordered, gonna be an everyday driver. Um, there's people driving their cars all over.
We're just asking for an opportunity if we can get our foot in the door. I do think that it would grow. I do think it would be good for the city. I do, gotta start somewhere. And we know we've tried in the past. Um, I really thank Kent for being here. I wanted to drag him into this when I started into it and held off from doing that because the ups and downs and the, over the years with it. Um, I saw the police department as the best opportunity to help us get our foot in the door. Hopefully, we can grow it. Have good support. Uh, I would love to be off of Stagecoach in a year. Doing something bigger and better out there. That'd be great. So, thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
One last thing. I would also fully encourage a public hearing. Um, we didn't advertise this. We're not an LLC yet, but it was all over Facebook.
Right.
Uh, we put it on several Facebook pages. I put it on my own. It was shared. Um, when I looked at the diagnostics, I looked close to 2,000 times and where it went from, I don't know. But there was, there was information out there. Um, as a matter of fact, when we got, uh, discouraging words, I encouraged them to come to the council. And to my knowledge, none of the people who were voicing their concern via Facebook are here tonight. Um, I do appreciate the, the altered opinions. I mean, we wanna make sure everybody is as happy as. Guys can do something about the noise at Bunting Pipeyard, that'd be great, but we, we know our limitations. And, um, yeah, the trains, we could rerun. But, um, anyway, we appreciate any help that you guys can give us. Alan and I are more than willing to hop on any committee or need. We're both available. We look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you for your comments, um, and your work in trying to make, uh, this happen. I, I support this idea. It, it's with me, a struggle with the, uh, location. And I've, trust me, I've sat down with a map as Counselor Zotti, trying to find something that would make more sense. Uh, but I do agree with, uh, Counselor West. Um, I believe a little more time for comments and some debate and, uh, uh, place this on, uh, the next agenda for a public hearing. Okay with it? Uh, I'd entertain a motion to do so. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kristen, if you would add that to the next. Um, as far as public hearings, hearings are concerned, is there any other public hearings, any issue? Or petitions, I should. Uh, looks like you can't talk. There you go.
I'm just, I'm not opposed to racing, but it does not, kind of sounds like there was. They can set up a dyno fairgrounds, grandstand.
Thanks. No questions, Counsel? Appreciate that. Okay, any further comment? Hearing none? Petitions are closed. I would, uh, I'd entertain a motion for a short recess.
Make that motion.
We've been here two hours. We have a motion, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We'll, uh, take a 10-minute recess.